Called over the June 22nd meeting of the Clive City Council. Would the clerk please call roll?
Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Council members.
Clive.
Here.
McCoy. Judkins. Weaver.
Here.
Nicola Nany.
Here.
We have everyone that's accounted for. Would you rise and join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have approval of the agenda. There are two corrections that I'm aware of. One on the consent item AD. The dollar amount for that Motorola should be nine one six five dot fifty, nine one six five dot fifty. And then the second change in the agenda would be that item number five will be moved up following our public hearings to be new item number three. So those would be the two corrections I'm aware of to the agenda.
Approval with corrections?
Second. Motion second approve the agenda with those corrections. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in here say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. The agenda is approved. Next, we move on to the citizen presentation part of our meeting. This is the opportunity anyone has to approach the council on an item that is not on the agenda. Do we have anyone online or in the chamber to address the council on item not on the agenda?
Your Honor, Councilman Judkins is trying to join the meeting now, just so you're aware.
But okay, I'll give her a moment there and remind everyone of our operating principles. We support the pillars of character counts, endeavoring at all times to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In doing our work, we expect everyone to act in a respectful manner consistent with these. So is Councilmember Judkins able to connect yet?
Councilman Judkins, this is Pete. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. I'm here. I'm sorry I'm late.
All right. Seeing no one approached the council and hearing no one online.
We do have a couple of folks participating online. If you'd like to get my attention, you can use the raise hand function. You go to the bottom of your Zoom screen, you'll see the reactions emoji. Hover over that click, you can use the raise hand function. Your Honor, I do not see hands going up.
Very good. We'll move on from citizen presentation to our consent items.
With resolution.
Second.
Motion second on the consent items. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post that vote?
I'm a yes.
So consent passes by a vote of, we're in suspense here, Matthew. It's coming, it's coming. Four with one absence. Thank you. Now we'll move on to our action items. First, we have a public hearing. And did we publish the appropriate public notice, Matthew?
Yes, Your Honor, that was published in the Des Moines Register on May 15th, 2023. And then public hearing was continued at our May 25th meeting until tonight.
All right. So I think the action that we're being asked to take on this one is to continue this till the July 13th meeting.
Yeah, Your Honor, considering a few factors, we have a council member who has a conflict of interest. And with this having a protest petition and requiring a super majority for any consideration of moving any reading forward, we are short of a council member this evening to meet that requirement. With that, also, the zoning change draft of the zoning change and development agreement came out earlier this week as a part of the packet. And I think there's also a desire from the, one of the parties involved to have longer time to review that as well. So with all those things in consideration, Your Honor, staff is recommending that we continue this public hearing to the July 13th meeting of the council and also table consideration of the first reading to the same time on the July 13th meeting. And in the meantime, it also affords opportunity for staff and parties involved to continue to negotiate and have discussions regarding a number of matters that were in the zoning change agreement as well. And so hopefully then staff will bring back further information for your July 13th meeting and we'll have the public hearing then.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions for Matt? Otherwise, we need to close public hearing.
I moved to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion second.
No, continue, not close.
Move to continue the public hearing.
Thank you.
Until July 13th.
Thank you. Second.
Motion second to continue the public hearing. Further discussion? Anyone in the chamber to address the council on that matter? If not, would the council please vote? And would clerk please post that vote?
I'm a yes, please.
Okay, so we've moved to continue that public hearing until the July 13th meeting. Next, we have the proposed ordinance that we need to table.
Move to table pros ordinance number 1136.
Second.
This motion to table this until also the July 13th meeting. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote?
I'm a yes.
And would clerk please post that vote?
So I'm abstaining just because of the conflict of interest.
So that passes with three yeses and one abstention. Very good. The next public hearing we have is on the budget amendment. And did we publish appropriate public notice?
We definitively did on June 9th, 2023. We confirmed that ourselves in the newspaper.
Thank you very much. Liz.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the second budget amendment for FY23, which was adopted 18 months ago. I provided a copy of the notice of the publication in your packet and I also outlined the overall amendments in the memo. No changes have been made since the last meeting, nor have we had any public input. So are any comments? Staff recommends approval.
Questions for Liz? Otherwise, we will, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
Took the words right out of my mouth. Further discussion? Seeing one, would the council please vote? And would clerk please?
I'm a yes.
So the motion to close the public hearing passes by a vote of four.
Move to resolution approving FY23 amendment two.
Wait, second.
Motion second on the resolution approving the amendment. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And would clerk please post that vote?
I'm a.
And that passes with four yes votes. Next, we have a possible third consideration ordinance 1135.
Your Honor.
Oh, excuse me. Yes, revise.
Your item up.
Next, we have the Class C retail alcohol license renewal. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight in front of you is a, an action item on the approval of the liquor license for Taps Pub. Back in 2019, a gentleman by the name of Timothy Hartman applied for a liquor license for Taps Pub. At that time, I recommended that it be denied based on Mr. Hartman's criminal record. The council went with that recommendation and denied that liquor license. A week after that denial, another person came forward. Will Hildreth said that he was going to be buying the business and applied for the liquor license for the same business, same business name. At that time, I felt it was suspicious and because sometimes someone will act as a straw purchaser when someone can't get a liquor license based on, on legal requirements such as a criminal record. But I met with Will Hildreth at that time. He gave me his verbal assurance that he had his own financing lined up and that he was going to be the business owner and that, that Mr. Hartman was only going to be a manager and not have a financial interest in the, the business. Based on that assurance, I recommended that it be approved. The council approved it at that time. That liquor license was renewed in 2020, 2021, and 2022. Shortly after his license was renewed in 2022, information began to come to me from the ABD that they were investigating who the actual owner of Taps Pub was. They felt that, that Will Hildreth was not the actual owner, that Mr. Hartman was actually the owner. And they provided me with a list of evidence they had compiled and they came to get some information from me as well. I put together that information and it's in your packet in a private, non-public portion of the packet because there's some tax information that we don't want to be available to the public. But in your packet, you'll see a, an evidence synopsis, bullets A through N. And each of those bullets has a documentation to show why I believe that Timothy Hartman is the actual owner of Taps Pub and not Will Hildreth. So tonight, my, our recommendation would be that you not approve a renewal for Will Hildreth under the LLC of WHR 101. And be glad to answer questions this time.
Questions for the chief. Ted?
I remember when this came up last time and I was, like you, skeptical, but also wanted to, you know, give the benefit of the doubt. Have you confronted Mr. Hartman and Mr. Hildreth with, I mean, the evidence looks pretty overwhelming, the documentation. Have you, have you addressed it with them directly? And if so, what was their responses?
Sure. The, the renewal was applied for just this past Friday by Mr. Hartman. And he was notified by the city clerk that what my recommendation was going to be before the council. I met with him two days ago at the police department and he, you know, gave verbal assurance that he was, he was, at one point, he said he was only the manager and he was an employee of this. But at another point, he said that he was actually paying Will Hildreth. There was a lot of confusing items. A lot of, I felt misleading statements and nothing that would overcome the documentary evidence that we had. When he said that he was an employee, he never offered to show any documentation that of being paid as an employee. Earlier today, Mr. Hildreth reached out, actually two hours before the council meeting to talk to me about this. I talked to him about some of the same things and he also assured me at that time that he is the owner, asking what he needed to do to straighten out the, the paperwork on this. But again, never offered to show me any documentation that he had the financing, that he had made the purchase of this business or that he had payroll records for Mr. Hartman. And any documentation that would, I think, appear at this time would be somewhat suspect after having an opportunity to provide that for some time.
Can you remind us what the process is if we deny the license? What's the process going for? What does that do to them?
Sure. If they file an appeal with the ABD, they will be able to stay in business during the appeal. The ABD, and correct me if I'm wrong, will assign it to an administrative law judge for a hearing. And the city would, at that time, have to produce evidence at that hearing to convince an administrative law judge that our case, in fact, is strong. It's been some time since we did that, probably back in 2013, 2014. But it is something that, that we have experienced before.
Other questions?
The question I have is, is there any, is Mr. Hildreth, you're here, do you want to have a chance to address the council and, and give your thoughts on this? There seems to be a lot of factual evidence here that, that.
And Your Honor, I will have a question as well, when you have time.
Thanks, Susan.
Okay. Yeah, so I understand.
State your name.
Oh, sorry. My name is Will Hildreth. I understand the evidence as he laid out. I did talk with him earlier today. I did ask him what we could do to make this like work. I've also talked with ABD through this process to try to figure out what we need to correct. My understanding at this point, I talked to the investigator in, I think it was March, and she said that we will reach out to you if we need any additional information. They have not reached out to me. Tim has been in contact with them since then, but with basically the same result. So when, when Tim and I started, it's gonna seem silly, but I met Tim in 14 on RagBri. And after that, in 16, he came to me with a business proposition of purchasing a house. I was able to help him. So we had established a business relationship at that point. And the end of 17, I lost my job. Tim helped me with a temporary job, so he's helping me out. Then in 18, because I had lost my job, I had access to funds to go into and I looked for an investment, which is when this came along. We tried to purchase the U. That fell through in the fall of 18, and then this came up. So while our structure is apparently not something that is correct, I, I'd ask for the opportunity to at least rectify that. And we have been working again with ABD to do so and to get something set in place. If our license is denied, we will, of course, be unable to operate and be unable to rectify that situation and get it to where we're operating appropriate to what, what chief would like us to do and what the laws regulate as well as the ABD's guidance.
So for the record, who is the owner of Taps Pub?
Myself, Will Hildreth.
Well, and I guess my concern here is you, you talked to the chief earlier today to figure out how to rectify this, but this isn't something that just happened today. You've had plenty, if this is that important to your business, you've had more than enough opportunity to figure out what is necessary to rectify it. And I would also say that it doesn't shut your business, according to what the chief just said, through the process. It doesn't shut your business down tomorrow. You still have a chance to work that through the, the process with ABD. So just to be clear on that.
Susan, well, Susan, why don't you ask your questions?
Okay, well, Chief, you explained that your initial concern was based on a criminal record. And I would like to understand current status there. Has this record been clean since that time? How long would a past criminal record come into play in consideration for this?
The chief is retrieving his notes, Susan.
Sorry, Susan, I was grabbing my, my notes, but the criminal record back at that time included arrests for OWI, first, second, and third, a theft, and I can't recall right at this time, other ones at that time that, that we used. Since that time, there have been some other issues. When we met in my office the other day, it, we, my matter, of course, ran his name and he was wanted at that time and had to have been taken into custody after, after our interview. So there are still some legal issues going on. I'm, I don't know what this current one is. It's a, it's a warrant that wasn't from the city of Clive. But it's, his criminal record was not overly serious. But I would say today, if we, we were, if he were to reapply, my feeling would be, would be that not only did he have this criminal record in the past, that he's essentially been lying to the city for the last four years with the current liquor license. And when I interviewed, interviewed him the other day about this, his reply was that he wasn't the one lying to the city, that Will Hildreth was the one lying to the city for the last four years. So that kind of speaks to the current ownership of, of Mr. Hildreth, I believe.
Other questions, Susan? If not, Eric, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble getting unmuted. Yes. So what would your expectation be for how long a record should be cleaned before someone could be in business?
Well, the, the state code doesn't spell it out specifically. It says that you have to be of good moral character. And there are a number of things that you can use to show good moral character. It doesn't give a specific time period for since a felony or misdemeanor, whatever it might be. But I guess I would go back to the, the fact that adding to the, the dishonesty over the last four years for me adds to, or shows poor moral character. And I, my recommendation, I feel, would stand if the ownership were to change. But again, that's up to the council to make that determination. My recommendation is only that, a recommendation. And the council has the power to decide whether or not to, to follow that.
Any follow-up, Susan?
No, thank you.
Thanks. Eric?
Mr. Hildreth, just to follow up on this, can you provide the council any factual evidence that, that proves that, that you are the owner, that you have applied for, you know, tobacco licenses, liquor licenses, things this night in nature in your name? Factual evidence is what I'm looking for.
Understood. I can provide the payments made when we originally.
And did you bring it tonight?
No. No.
I do have a question.
So you mentioned you, you want a chance to be able to rectify the structure that you, you know, you're saying you have an odd structure and you want a chance to rectify it. Can you explain to us what your current structure is and what you expect it to become if, if this were to go your way?
What I expect it to become is whatever the ABD.
Just, just to clarify, can you start by telling us what your current structure is right now?
Sure. Our current structure is we have an LLC set up, WRH 101 LLC. That is sole ownership of me. And originally, we have applied through that LLC for the liquor license. Tim's LLC is the management company. Tim's LLC is the one that does the business because I have other things going on. I do not want to be involved as an investment. I own it, but I am an investor. And so that's why he has signed. I've given him full authorization to sign for me in those regards to the business.
So, so with, with that mention, you mentioned that he has full authority to sign on your behalf. Is that in conjunction with the WHR 101 LLC or the, the management LLC?
Just, just with his. So anything that I would be signing under WRH 101 LLC would be me. But as far as the business under the management company is LLC, he signs for everything, which is what does the business for Taps Pub.
And, and so the, the deed or the, the title to this business is, is under which LLC?
The contract is under WRH LLC. The initial one, I have not seen the secondary one. Thank you for confirming.
Okay. And so where, where would you expect, or where do you, how do you plan to rectify this? What's your plan right now to get to where you think you should be?
Well, with the recommendation of ABD, we need to, whatever they suggest, because to be honest, it sounds like, it sounds like we just need to start doing the books under the WRH LLC and then having the management company be an entity hired and then therefore paid by WRH 101 LLC. So that would be the, the higher entity and then hired his, his entity underneath. Sorry.
The way it sounds to me, and maybe I'm mischaracterizing this, but it, it sounds like to me kind of a shell game of how you guys are setting this up to get around the regulations and the recommendation previously that we went through. So what I would suggest is.
May I say something? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
You mentioned me and I just want to say.
Yep, that's fine.
Quick. My name's Timothy Hartman. I have operated at Taps Pub for seven years. Will's only been involved in four. I operated under Kevin Cothe before all that. Kevin Cothe owns the building still. He wanted out of it. Will threw down a substantial amount of money to come into the business to buy it. He wanted an investment. Like you said, he lost his job. He's looking for another way to make money. He did that. He did that. He also has houses and other things that he does. I kept on running it. He has the WHR 101 LLC. He has insurance under him. He has the liquor license under him. He has any of the liability under him. If somebody gets hurt in there, it's under him, everything like that. I run Taps Pub LLC. I order the beer. I do the payroll. I do everything like that. That's what I do. I run it from the day-to-day operations. If he wanted to walk in there and shut the place down, boom. If you, if we couldn't get a new lease, he would have to be the one to figure that out. That's not me. I go in there, I unlock the door, I make sure the bartender is there, things like that. As far as my criminal record, I haven't been in trouble since 2017, I believe. I got a driving well barred. When this happened, so as he mentioned, I have, he said I had a OWI third. I do not have an OWI third. I got an OWI in 2006. That was my first DUI. I got an OWI in 2009. That was my second DUI. I did get an OWI in 2015. It was a second, second DUI. He said I was a felon. That's why I got rejected in 2019. I am not a felon. I did not get anything for that. And the main reason people were concerned about my record then is because I got that driving well barred. Since then, I've cleaned up my record, rectified all that. I have a valid driver's license. I have no probation, no parole. I have, doing everything legit. My taxes are legit for the past seven, eight years of my life, for the first time ever. Everything is real. You can look at anything. I have the payroll. And as far as like us being able to like rectify any of this sort of stuff, we, we just found this out, what's going on. The past four years, it's not like we've been in contact with, to the chief or anything like that, saying, hey, you're doing this wrong. You need to change after year one, year two, year three. No, we literally found this out just a couple of days ago. And so with this, I have been on the phone with five, six different lawyers explaining our situations. We didn't lie to you guys or to the chief. We messed up, just like he, I'm not gonna say that he lied to you guys and said that I had a felon and an OWI third. He made a mistake. I made a mistake. Will made a mistake. That's why we're just looking for the chance to rectify it. I've been there for seven years. I've owned or ran a bar since I was 21 years old. I am not new to this. I am great in the community. You can ask the Clive Food Bank, Urbendale Food Bank. We do regular things with them constantly. We had one of our regulars pass away over COVID. We buried him for a single mother, you know? My, one of my bartenders, she's a great person, has a heart of gold. She got pregnant, was in a bad relationship. I did whatever I could to help her out with that. Now that kid, his middle name is Timothy, which is my name. I'm his godfather. You know, we do everything for the community and we all do it together. Will brings in his friends constantly. He invested in a place because he wanted a watering hole to bring his friends in, go in there and eat. This used to just be a pub in Clive, Iowa, where people went to, and maybe there were some issues. We've had zero cops called the entire time I've been in charge of it, other than one time when a guy had a heart attack and that's it. Throughout all of that, we have not caused any problems. We handle everything ourselves. We pass every inspection. We have every single license that you need as far as like food inspection and the safe serve tips training, food management, everything like that. And when, when this was just a bar serving beer and liquor, we did, they did no food when I went in there. Now we're serving 30 meals a day out of the place. The place is cleaned up. It's gotten better. And if this was an issue, but just against me, I wish I had the liquor license and Will was just a partner. Because then there would be 300 people at the door coming up here to speak on my behalf. And I'm sorry, I'm getting flustered, but I've been put in a bad light by this chief and I don't like it at all. You can look me up, ask anybody, and I am just not in a very good spot with this. So, and I understand I am not the owner, so this is not something you guys got to do with me, but I've been there for seven years, under two owners. So thank you for letting me talk.
Fair enough. And I, I appreciate your comments and, and, and I, I appreciate the fact that you're sharing that. I think we all believe in second chances and, and certainly, you know, wish everyone success. I think certainly from my perspective, the concern was, was there a level of duplicity here that was intentional to get around the, you know, our, our regulations and our.
All of our books, everything goes straight through the accountant.
So, so fair enough. So you say what, what you're looking for is a chance to rectify, and I appreciate that. So I guess my question maybe is to the chief, is, is this something that can be delayed in order to give them that opportunity? I, I'm not even, you said you've only found this out for a couple of days. I find that.
Yesterday was when I found out.
I found it out too. So I guess I would like a little bit more clarification from the chief on that.
You called me on Tuesday and told me that I was in the city council. That's when I found out. I checked. You called me on Tuesday and told me that I wasn't in the city council. That's when I found out. I checked, you know, went through it. And that that's when I found out. So I did not know about this a year ago, two years ago. Nobody has spoken with us since he first met with Will in 2019.
Chief.
So we didn't know any of it. As far as us doing things wrong, we're just, we messed up.
I think legal counsel can tell us the current license expires June 27th. Is that correct?
The paper says, fourth of July.
Okay, I'm sorry. What was the question, Ted?
They're asking for an opportunity to rectify because they just found out about this. So what kind of leeway and latitude do we have in providing them that opportunity? Or do we have to make that call tonight?
Okay, the the reason that for the late notification, the the application for renewal only came in on Friday of last week and which forced me to start putting all this together. This information had been come to light, but we chose the time of their renewal to as an appropriate time to bring this forward to you. As far as the process after this, if the the item before you tonight is to to approve the license, if you decline to approve it, if you vote against approving it, then they may they may appeal it and they can stay open during the appeal because it's a a timely filed appeal if I'm if I'm using the right terminology. But they will be able to stay open until a an administrative law judge would make a decision. And during that time period, I'm sure the they would have the opportunity to reorganize their business, but then we have to, we have to take that in front of an administrative law judge and convince them that they're doing more than just a a shell game with with signatures and and paper ownership. And while I'm up here, I just wanted to to clarify a little bit on the criminal record record. I've found my memo from four years ago. There was an arrest for OWI first in 2006, arrest for theft in 2007, driving while barred in 2009, public intoxication and interference with official acts in 2009. OWI second offense in Ankeny, 2009, an arrest for OWI third in 2015 in Urbandale. I don't know what it was pled to. He said it was an OWI second, second. There's no such legal term for, it's either first, second, or third. Driving while license suspended or revoked, 2017, driving while barred habitual offender, 2018, driving while barred habitual offender in 2018. There were many involvements that that do not appear on a DCI criminal history. At that time, he was listed in a defendant in Iowa cases, civil and criminal 56 times. And the ABD says that a person of good reputation is someone who indicates they will comply with all laws and rules in governing the license. And when evaluating a person's good reputation, the local authority may consider such factors as the person has a history of showing disregard for the law, has convicted of selling alcoholic beverage to underage people, or has a history of operating a motor vehicle while under the influence of alcohol or drugs. Whether or not, you know, he, these have been a long time ago. At this point, they do point toward a person's character and I think make the threshold that the ABD set out by law.
Other questions for the chief?
Chief, have we had any calls or how many calls we had in the last four years to to TapSpub?
Calls for service at TapSpub have not been a concern. I I I agree totally with Mr. Hartman on that account. It has not been a problem bar. The problem is with the license.
Just as a reminder of the action before you, procedurally, what's pending is a renewal by the owner of their liquor license for one year. So what they've done is they've come, it's a one year at a time look. And so when the renewal came forward this time to the clerk, we go through our normal process to validate leases and financial information and criminal information. So it is a wholesome look and it was quicker than normal because of the the turnaround they needed to continue to be in business. So I just want to give you a sense of like, that's the process. It's a one year renewal at a time. The clerk validates kind of the administrative things and the chief and I look at the criminal and and civil court side of things. Councilman member Judkins, your point's well taken. It is, as far as a look back period, there is no case authority on that. ABD has one of these sorts of things and leaves it to the local authority, i.e. you all, to make that wholesome character determination. So that's what's pending. Your options, of course, are to move to approve the permit request. You can deny the permit request. If you continue it, I think the situation is their timing is rather tight. Like if you continue consideration for to the next council meeting, that's the 13th. I don't know how that plays for for the business owner here. But those are what's pending before you. Were there other questions, Your Honor?
Yes, just to clarify, you talked about, you know, continuing it. But from their perspective, they only have the right to continue operating if an appeal is taken after a denial.
That's correct.
Right?
Or if, that's correct. If you don't approve the renewal, the the and this clerk will correct me if I'm wrong, but their license expires then.
Right, so that's.
It'd be better to deny in that instance, or I know obviously they prefer the approval, but it'd be better to deny than to continue.
I don't know if I would say that if I was the business owner involved, just because of the standard of review by administrative law judge, you're you're taking some chance there. Did the clerk have more to?
There's a potential that you could actually continue to the next meeting because their application is timely filed. And there is a length of time that the state will allow us to.
Allow them to continue to do while you consider it?
So there is the potential that if I could mark their license as timely filed with ABD, giving us another time, another meeting to look at it.
I I think if the council's concern is to give a little bit more time for consideration and the party to look at this, that to me seems like a more prudent approach. If you are inclined to deny and let them take that next level of appeal, that is also an option.
And could you clarify the ABD's involvement? That was before the license.
I actually cannot clarify that. I have no knowledge of that. I'll have to defer to the clerk and the chief on that.
My recollection on the process is that if there were a denial tonight, that the owner would file an appeal with the ABD and they would set a a hearing and would give legal counsel from both sides a chance to to present before that that single administrative law judge. From my perspective, the problem on continuing is I don't know how much you can change, really change the structure of a business in a two week period enough to make everyone feel completely comfortable that it is not just a a paper shuffle to make it work.
I guess my.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. No, just clarify. I guess I I thought I was hearing that ABD had concerns prior to the filing of the.
Yes, or after after their renewal last year, the ABD reached out to me. That's what brought this to my attention. They were investigating who the owner was. There were some some things I outlined in the those those different bullets that that they provided me, including a COVID relief loan that went to Mr. Hartman directly in his LLC for that that business, which again makes it appear that he is the owner, not just a manager. A manager would not receive that money. But they brought that to me and they asked me for some information because there was a a police investigation that we were involved with where Mr. Hartman held himself out to be the the owner of of TapSpub. I provided them information. They provided it to me. I don't know what the status of the ABD investigation is. But, you know, this, I, they were fully informed that we had this action before our council tonight and that there may be an appeal if if there was a denial.
I would like to just expand on the COVID aspect and I'm my one other way to read that, if I may, just to provide the council some thoughts legally is a management company. If if what they say their structure is, is ownership and management, a management company would be entitled to also apply for COVID relief. So that wasn't determinative to me. But I I just asked. I would ask that you consider, you know, there's two sides to look at that, but the accumulation of the evidence from your staff here was a recommendation of a denial tonight. And I'm not sure you guys had some other things to say, but I'll let the mayor handle.
Thank you.
Procedures.
Any other questions for the chief? Again, the applicants, I think, wanted to make some final comments. Thank you, chief. Anything else that you'd like to say?
Yes, please. Thank you. I I know that what we've been talking about, I understand. As far as restructuring without doing a shell game, we would need significant amount of time. I do not know how long it takes if we were to file an appeal. I don't know how long that takes. But for us to, if we were to sell to another entity, regardless, getting me out of the equation or however, we it would take some time. You can't just set up a new entity overnight, generally speaking. So it would be good if we had time. Of course, I'm going to ask to renew it and then renew the conversation next year. If we have not done anything, by all means, pull it away. But give us some time to actually set this straight.
With the bar having zero issues in the past seven years since I've been there, zero. The cops has never been called, nothing, no fights, no never failed an inspection, never failed a sting, anything like that. Instead of putting us on the bar in the community, approved a bar, when it hits in a year, we come back here, make us be here, and we'll show you all the documentation you guys want, everything you guys are asking for. I'm saying we made a mistake. We want to fix it. Just like you listed off all my bad, all my records and things like that. Seventy percent of the things you listed off were from 2009 and before. That's before I was 21 years old. I'm concerning that before my adult life. Since I've been an adult, I've had one DUI and a few driving while bars. And as far as the thing that I got arrested for yesterday, or Tuesday that he was talking about, that was a suit, I got sued because I used on a flooring business in 2011, and it was a day warrant thing and they just picked me up on that. And that's all that was. And I was out of there in an hour. I have no criminal stuff. You can check everything. All my fines are paid. All my taxes are paid. I am 100% legit on everything. So I'm trying to do everything right. I don't know if I made him mad somehow, but I did not mean to. And one year for us to have a liquor license for a place that has zero issues and only supported the community, come back here with all the correct paperwork. What's what's wrong with that?
Susan, I think you've got.
I do. I I will tell you, I find all that very compelling, especially that the bar has been operated in a good way and your standing in the community is good based on what you are doing to support others. I am bothered by hearing the reference to the alcoholic beverage department, whatever it is. And it sounds like they haven't gotten back to you to give you any insight.
I talked to Jennifer, who was in the ABD, and she said her investigation is closed. She said she's done with it. I don't know what that means, but she said she's done with it. It's closed. I don't know.
Could you say her name again?
Jennifer.
Houston?
Houston. She, so yeah, I called her.
I just think in in fairness, they do need some direction from them if the ABD thought there was a problem and what they needed to do to fix it in their eyes.
And Jennifer did tell me, I can call her anytime about any of this sort of stuff. She knows, I got, I was 100% honest with her, just as I was with police chief and you guys, we, what we're doing is trying to just run a business. We give away so much money in the community. That's why there's not a lot of money there at the end. Like tonight, our special tonight is a $5 burger basket, a one third pound cheeseburger with cheeseburger with fries. And and there's 40 of them going out tonight. That's cheaper than McDonald's by over half. You know, we're not making money on that and we're paying a cook to be there and a bartender.
Who, which of your entities has the employees?
To my notes, the TapSpub LLC.
Do you have a lease or management agreement between the two of you?
We do not. Jennifer did recommend we write one up, though. So that's another thing that we bring you guys, that we have to switch over the bank accounts, get rid of the management agreement, I guess, or get rid, not even have the management agreement, get rid of the TapSpub LLC and just go under the WHR 101 LLC. The main reason we did that, honestly, is he's always out of town doing with his houses, things like that. I needed to go to the bank and stuff all the time. You know, you need to go get ones, go get fives, things like that.
Who who's your gen, who's your corporate counsel?
That's what I was just gonna ask.
It's okay. I'll look it up on the second.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, well, Dave Helster, I believe, should be the one listed.
You did mention that you're you've reached out to to a lawyer to when this came to light. Have have you been working with any, have you?
So I've talked to Jeff Lambert a little bit. He said, basically, everybody, so like I said, we got this information Tuesday to get a lawyer to come with us here tonight was kind of ridiculous. They're all busy, but they all like the ones that I talked to, like I just called like three or four of them immediately, tried to figure out just what we should do, what's the process, how do we fix this? And they all basically said, none of us can really make it there on Thursday night. Come back Friday, or like call them back Friday. See if they if they deny you, we'll go talk to them, we'll file an appeal, things like that. But after that point, it's kind of hard and like I said, I mean, you guys can dig through my criminal record all you want. You guys can dig through everything. You can talk to everybody. Go up to TapSpub, you know, hang out, talk to the people there, see what we're like there. I, you know, we're an open book there. It's yes, I say the I'm the owner. I'm the owner of TapSpub LLC. I'm the face of the business. Will is not. Nobody even knows Will owns it. And so it works. That's how.
You know, I I know that this is, this is a, you know, difficult position for you guys to, you know, be up here and and talk about these things, right? It's it's not a fun position to be in. I do want to clarify real quick. You mentioned 2009 was the last time you had any issues.
No, no, no. I said about 70% of the, any.
Oh, I see.
Criminal things that he said was from 2009 and before. That's when I was 20 years older. Younger. Since then, I've gotten ADUI and I've gotten some driving while bars and things like that. So from anything from 2010 afterwards, it's nothing major. I, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'll be about 34 now, 34 now. I'm cleaning myself up from when I was 20 years old. If you guys were the same at 35 and you were at 20, then okay, more power to you, but I wasn't, you know? So.
Will or Mr. Hildreth, sorry, I shouldn't approach you that way. How do you compensate your property management company? Do you pay him to run the bar?
I I do not. The profits come directly from the management company that comes into the bar work that he manages.
And then how do you make money off of this?
I have not. I have not. My my money is sitting in in a business. So if we were to sell. Okay. I enjoy the community. I enjoy that nobody knows a handful know that I am the owner. Anyway, I get pleasure out of seeing what we have done for the community, how Tim has turned that bar. It never was a bad bar, but he's made it a very great place to be and.
So to to that end, and I think this was what council was asking in a maybe different way, but so if if you're holding money, basically, for all intents and purposes, for Mr. Hartman, that makes it harder to say that he's not the de facto owner and this is just a holding. I mean, I mean, you're holding money.
No, I I, well, I I understand that. And that's why we asked earlier for a chance to actually get this separated in a satisfactory structure.
So has there been any return on your investment up until this point?
No, there is not.
Yeah. So like I said before, to me, it it very much feels like a shell game in an attempt to kind of circumvent the the procedures for getting the license, right? Whether one person calls himself the owner or someone else calls themselves the owner, it's all kind of semantics. In essence, you're the owner, right? Now you have, you have an equity stake in it. I get that, but you know, I think the the best thing you have going for you is exactly what Susan said, is is the fact that you know what, you have run a good establishment and and we haven't had any issues and and that's appreciated.
Right. His original, his original investment has been paid back. And then there is money in the bank account that he owns. That's profits. So he has money in the bank account. He just has no reason to pull it out. It's in the bank. Why not? Why not leave a healthy amount of money in there? So.
Are there further questions? I guess the question I have is, have you got gotten your questions answered or is there more time needed? There are unanswered questions. It would change the way, go ahead.
I'll just make one comment.
Yeah.
More than a question. I would. I would, I would be okay with extending this to the next meeting if they can get a a management agreement in place between now and then. That I think that would be a show of goodwill and a show of willingness to work with us. But I'm not speaking for everybody on the council, obviously. I'm just commenting on what I think I would be okay with.
So you do you want to move to continue to July to the the next?
July 13.
July 13th meeting. Contingent upon the participants bringing in a management agreement and really something else, guys. We need to have documentation, right?
Payroll and me getting paid for the past four years. Payroll and me getting paid for the past four years.
Yep. Well, what I would say is, I I agree with that. I I would be comfortable with that. And then we we see that we, on July 13, we we would, contingent upon you doing that successfully, we approve it with the proviso that next year, everything better be buttoned up, right? And and structured appropriately so that isn't the shell game at that.
Okay, so management agreement, payroll, and just any other documentation on.
So someone needs to make motion to.
You want the leases and
Help.
Just everything.
Well, and I just want to throw in that I don't see this as something that we would need to require forever moving forward either. You know, there've been a number of years that have transpired. I don't like the idea of trying to have something that is a shell game. There needs to be something where it's honest, but I also think there should be some kind of a plan where Mr. Hartman could own this place at some time in the not too distant future if they wanted to do that, because from what I'm hearing, he's been a really good citizen and is running a good business in the community, and there is value in recognizing that somebody is moving forward. So.
Sounds like the sentiment of the council is to continue this and come back on the 13th. So but we need a motion with specificity.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to to continue to the July 13 meeting contingent on the the participants here, the applicants, having some of that documentation, specifically the management agreement, any other documentation they can provide. And if they are able to retain legal counsel in the meantime, that would be a good idea to bring them along.
May I recommend that you add to your motion that that items be submitted by Friday, July 7, so that the parties can review and update the packet? I said the 7.
I will, I will make that that correction or amendment to my motion.
Where do we?
We've got got the motion.
Second.
We have a second. Is everyone understand what the motion is at this point?
Susan was your second.
So again, we're giving them a chance to provide documentation, continuing this, or should it be tabled, or is it?
Either one is fine, Your Honor. You've selected a specific date. Either one's fine.
So we're continuing that. Further discussion. Seeing one, seeing none with the council, please vote. And the vote to continue this to our meeting in July on the 13th passes by vote for affirmative. So you've got work to do, gentlemen.
I appreciate it. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you very much.
If Hildren has questions, have him give me a call, write my number down or name down. And then the specific items needed was your property manager agreement and employee employment records. I think that's what I heard just for clarification.
Then also get the lease and insurance and WHR LLC.
The clerk will handle that and any clerk is and any extension that goes past the date on your wall again, work with him on that.
Okay. And then the liquor license itself on the, at least on the papers, 4th of July.
You need to work with the clerk on that. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you're you're good for now. Call you tomorrow.
All right, we'll move. We'll move on to the item on the third consideration of ordinance 1135 Shadow Creek rezoning. Doug.
The final consideration tonight, no additional information has been provided. No additional comments have been submitted to the city at this point. We recommend approval.
Yes, I just want to let everyone, I'll be abstaining due to my relationship with one of the owners.
Okay, thank you, Ted.
Number 1135, being considered for the third time, place once passed is adopted.
Second.
Motion second for third consideration, further discussion, seeing none with council, please vote. And will the clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of three affirmative and one abstention. Ordinance number 1135 is declared to have been enacted. Thank you, Doug. Next up, Richard is going to tell us about Circeina Park Construction.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, we have the next two items related to the construction of Circeina Park. The first item is a construction administration services agreement with RDG for the oversight of this construction and that in the amount of $32,575. And the second one is for the purchase of the playground equipment related to the project. As we talked about last time, the way we did it is we only bid out the actual installation of the playground equipment because we're able to find a better deal on the actual equipment through a purchasing cooperative. So for you tonight is the purchase of that equipment for $70,831.23, which represents a savings of about 25 to 35% of what we would have paid if we would have bid it out. So found a good deal on that.
Very good. Questions for Richard? Yes.
Question, what's the life expectancy of that equipment?
It's going to be a traditional playground, probably in the neighborhood 20 to 30 years, as long as you don't get vandalism or or fire or something like that.
What's the flooring on that or as far as where the equipment is located on? Is that that mashed rubber?
Yep. Yeah, it'll be the port and place rubber surface. That'll be under all of that.
Is the city going to do that, or are we going to contract that out?
So that was part of the contract that the council approved with Correll. So that was that the bid alternate B that we asked the council to approve. So we originally had bid the base bid with mulch because we didn't want to commit ourselves in case rubber was too expensive, but we got a really good price on the rubber. So that was the the alternate that we asked you to approve, and it was part of that contract. So.
We're all going to be doing that, or we?
They will do a, they'll probably have a sub do it. Yeah, because there's there's certified people that do that for a living. So they probably worked out with a sub to come in and do that.
You and you guys can oversee that, right?
Yes. Well, and that's what we'll work with RDG on to make sure that that's done and installed correctly.
Would someone like to move the resolution?
Resolution proving professional service agreements with RDG for construction administration for $32,575,000.
Second. Most than a second for discussion, seeing none with council, please vote. And the clerk, please post that vote. That passes with three affirmatives and one abstention.
Move the approval of purchase playground equipment for $70,312.3.
Second. Motion second for discussion, seeing none with council, please vote. And will clerk, please post that vote. And that passes by a vote of four affirmative. Next item is the city manager employment agreement and Ted, I'll let you tell us about.
That's just Matt. I mean, come on. Yeah, no, the personnel committee met. We met with Matt. We met with Sarah Knoll Wilson and her team as well to kind of review their findings. You know, we we collated all of the 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 ratings from all of us as well as as the ratings and information from from Sarah. And, you know, uniformly, it was all very, very positive. Just like anyone, there's some improvement areas that that we all have to work on, and certainly Matt knows what those are. But, you know, they're they're very minimal in the grand scheme of things. Matt's done a very, very good job. And so we are definitely recommending that we extend him for another two-year contract and and you see the percentages and what have you. You know, the main thing is, I think that that we are right, kind of at the median average for city managers here in the metro. So, you know, just like we want to do with most of our employees, we're right, where we want to be from a salary and benefits standpoint. So definitely want to recommend that to the full council.
Thank you, Ted. Susan, you want to add anything?
Just as we discussed the performance evaluation, it was really notable how positive the city staff is about Matt. So I think it there's telling that publicly. It was really quite compelling, and they told us that it is unusual to hear so many positive descriptions coming from so many people. And so we're very fortunate, I feel.
And it was really nice to get that 360, right? So that we could hear not just from our perspective, but from the the staff's perspective as well. So.
Would someone like to move a resolution to approve that agreement?
I'll move a resolution.
Second.
Further discussion. Seeing none with the council, please vote. And the clerk, please post the vote. And that passes with four affirmative and no dissenting votes on that one.
Yeah, that's right. You notice McCoy's not here to vote for you, right?
Appreciate the council's support with core to serving for this community for.
McCoy notwithstanding.
Moving right along. Richard, you've you can tell us about the Clive Festival, please.
Yes, I'm, I get to be a fill-in for for Christie and Jeff Lucas tonight, so neither of them will be able to be here. So this is really the result of their work to get us to this point. And so I'm excited to give you a preview. Can you get the screen switched here? Fantastic. So as you can see, the Clive Festival is coming up on July 21 and 22. So we are just under a month until the the big weekend coming up. So we're very excited about the music lineup that we have this year. We were able to stretch the budget a little bit more in terms of we're able to afford on the bands that we got. So we have a great lineup on Friday night with Unfortunate Suns opening for the Sons of Gladys Kravitz. Sons of Gladys Kravitz have been here in the past since I've been here, but they were very popular and came with a lot of requests from people that have attended in the past. And next, on Saturday night from 5 to 8, we have the Punching Pandas. And then from 8:30 to 11:30, we have Standing Hampton. Both are bands that people have requested in the past for us. So we're excited to see the lineup that we have this year, and I think it'll be very popular with the community. One thing this year, I really want to put a shout out to both Jeff and Christie. They have really just been kind of calling as many people as they can, scouring every possible place to find opportunities for sponsorships and grants. And one of the things that they were able to do this year is get a presenting sponsor for the festival. So Lincoln Savings Bank came on as a one-year agreement to be the presenting sponsor for this. Smart Honda is back. The Polk County Board of Supervisors are back. Same with Next Generation Realty. We have a couple of other new ones in there, but in total, we're about $8,000 ahead of where we were last year from a sponsorship standpoint. And we still have that about about months ago on that. So they've done an incredible job, and I want to thank them for that. Just looking at major expenses here, fireworks did go up a little bit from last year. I believe we were at 14,000 the previous two years, so they went up about 2,000 and actually could have gone up a lot more. But the company that we work with recognized that they've been here for a long time, and they submitted a little bit and and really, I think, saved a little bit more than they typically would. We have live sound in our music for $8,700. One of the things that will probably change next year is, this is probably the last year where Meli Sound will exist. He is wanting to retire. His son has helped in the past, has actually taken a job with another sound company in town. So our our days of getting really cheap sound are probably over. So we'll probably see a difference in that cost next year, but we're appreciative for him to to stay out of retirement for one more year to do this for us. We're doing a little bit different stage rental and signage look this year. So instead of the stage and tent that we had last year, we're getting a stage, it's almost like a trailer stage. You see it like 8035 downtown that has the ability to have the presenting sponsor banners on all the sides of it. And we're really excited about how that's going to maybe have a little bit of a different look. And we're going to alter the stage just a little bit. We're going to put it where it's supposed to be for Greenbelt Landing. So shift it from that kind of southeast corner that we're going to shift it almost like 20, 30 degrees. So it's the straight east-west to give people a feel of what it's going to probably look like when Greenbelt Landing is done. And then you can see here, our anticipated expenses and revenue are within a few thousand dollars of each other. That can drastically change if we get 83-degree temperatures out there, or if we get 99 degrees and high humidity. So if we get a really great year, I expect that that revenue will be a lot higher than the expenses. But if we get a really tough year like we did last Friday night or last year on Friday night, then those could be lower. And we're still scouring, trying to find additional sponsorships and ways to to get people engaged in this. Talked a little bit about this, but you can see this is what the stage will look like. And it gives us opportunity to advertise all the the sponsorships, the presenting sponsors, and everyone that's joining us on this. We're altering the fireworks a little bit from 10 o'clock to 9:30 to make them a little bit more family friendly. And like we talked about, the the stage in the new location. We also have gotten a new bounce house vendor. One of the things is, we ended up having to probably put more effort into the bounce houses than we wanted to last year. So we found a different vendor through an RFP process that is going to handle everything for us instead of meeting volunteers for all of that. So with that, we're looking forward to seeing everyone on July 21 and 22. Happy to take any questions that you have.
Questions for Richard. We have an bags contest.
Yeah, I believe so, yes. And we're still working to nail down some really cool activities. We've got a little bit more time. We're going to try to fill in more between the morning activities on Saturday and when the music and everything gets going on Saturday nights. So we're looking at, can we filter in more things along with the slip and slide and some of those things to make it almost like an all-day activity there?
The Cook Boys are already working on their design for the cardboard boat race.
Just a couple of things, Richard, a couple of concerns. One is with the fireworks.
Yeah.
Understand that it's gone up. And one of the things last year was a 22-minute fireworks show, which is incredibly long.
Yeah.
And loses people's interest. Shorter, more intense. That's what people are looking for.
Yes.
You know, this is a projected deficit right here, which is always troubling to me. Last year was a deficit. This year, we're looking at a deficit. I understand we're looking at creating some new sponsorships. I love to see that. But we have to look at this as, you know, this is run this as a business, you know, run a business deficits right here. We need to look at how do we, how do we make this work, right, financially? I'm not sure we're, I'm not sure we're there yet.
Okay.
Just just to clarify, the the deficit that we were projecting, that's based on kind of like conservative numbers, right?
Yeah, that's, you know, what we did is we kind of took what the average up was. We had a good night and a bad night last year. So we kind of took the average of that, and that's the best way we can do that. Like I said, if it's 90 degrees and 100% humidity out there, we're going to struggle to sell a lot of alcohol. But if we get it, you know, 85 and and a lot lower humidity, we're going to sell a lot of alcohol and drinks. So.
And that deficit was, I think, three.
Yeah, that's just projected at 3,000 right now. You know, we won't go entirely until, you know, we got another month of sponsorships to gain. That's just under the current sponsorships that we have.
And any thoughts on those? Forgot what they, they were like those RVs or buses that had air conditioning and seating inside. Are we going to have those again?
No, we aren't going to have that again. One of the things is, we've done is put together is maybe as a sponsorship package for a higher level presenting sponsors. So at this point, Lincoln Savings Bank, the most they could commit for presenting sponsor this year was $7,500. And so we really felt that that wasn't the level where that would come with it. But we have developed some levels that if next year we want to find someone that we come in more, then that could be a part of that.
Any other questions? Looks good. Good work.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move into the reports. We're starting here and deep. What have you got?
Thank you, Your Honor. Two very positive meetings today. One with our presenting sponsor for the Clive Festival, Lincoln Savings Bank. They were very generous with their time. We had invited them to come and do a check-in with one of their large, a large customer vendors, which is City of Clive. We've heard a lot in the news about some stress in the regional banking sector caused by persistent high interest rates some changes in the commercial real estate market as well, and some other factors. But during the meeting today, the bank was very transparent, and they showed us that they are in strong financial position, and they have a plan to continue to weather through this difficult period of time. They also were committed to continuing to communicate with all of us if anything should change with that their condition. But speaking personally, I left that meeting feeling very good about our our finance partner. And I asked Liz if there was anything else that you took away from that meeting that you'd care to share.
No, I think I I can repeat what you're saying about the transparency and just feeling really confident and comfortable. It's been a great transition, and I spoke about that. I think Matt missed that part from his other meeting that he had to go to, but it was but real for the council, you need to know that it's been a really great transition. It's been a great working relationship there in the community. You can see from the Clive Festival, they're involved. They're not just donors, but they will, they're they're in person, and I understood that there was going to be a couple of people. Also, you'll see at the Clive Festival working as well. So we really, we really enjoyed them.
Also, nice to be getting, for the first time in a long time, right, a nice interest income from those big deposits that are sitting over there. World has changed. The second meeting we had today was with MetroNet. There was some conversation at our last meeting about inviting MetroNet to present again. We're working on dates. It looks like now. It looks like now that would be August. There are three remaining sectors or pieces of neighborhoods that have not been completed yet. Them is your neighborhood. Council McCoy's neighborhood has been completed now. Though the one that they're moving into, I hope this coming week is going to be Verona Hills and Angel Park. So more work to be done and they understand that the council is asking questions, reasonable questions about why this is taking so much longer than expected. And also asking questions about why are you continuing to blast mail into neighborhoods when you haven't actually been ready to bring services to that neighborhood? So they're aware of those, aware of those issues. And between now and when they come in August, we'll have a chance to keep working with them to clean up some of these remaining problems that they have. But at this point, no restoration issues that we're aware of, that they were shared with us today, and also no strikes that they have had. But that's only because they haven't been working in. So we'll keep on them. Jared and the public works team continue to do a very, very good job, make sure they do things to climb with.
Have you had contact from Google Fiber yet?
Matthew, I have not had contact.
Not that we're aware of, no?
No.
I know they're going to. They have announced, of course, that they're moving into Des Moines and they're real interested in having Clive be their next place to come. I had that conversation at the Downtown Chamber event where they were the major sponsors and, you know, it's kind of a big splash. So I haven't heard, but anyway, I have somebody's card, I'll get it to you.
Okay.
Maybe they'll get to your.
They'll get to your house.
Another three years from now.
Finally, and I want to give a shout out to the utility billing staff specifically on this and also some folks on the IT side and the community development office. I feel today where we sit, we got our meter reads done on the fifteenth for water bills. And we are doing the spot checks now on test bills that we're running that will have all of the new rates and the tiered billing structure for residential stormwater and irrigation ready to go. We ran our reports today to identify problem reads. Sometimes that's just because there were some crossed wires between the signals that when we drive our truck through and get the reads, we don't get it every time. We could, that's also on those. We also have some where we've just got a few pieces of bad equipment, but our knowledge, our accuracy of understanding where we sit is very, very good today because of the work that my teammates have put in to get us to this point. And I continue to hear very little from residents about where they are with the tiers or what this means for their irrigation. I expect that will tick up once we get the first bills out and we have heavier irrigation in July and August. But we're prepared. We're well prepared to handle that casework when it comes in. And I feel very good because of the hard work of my teammates, that the bills that people receive will be accurate.
Anything else?
Oh, your honor. Free gun.
No report tonight, your honor.
I get to make up for that. I've got a couple. So MPO, the most relevant thing there was they came out with their annual payment condition PCI report. Clive came in at fifty percent for good or excellent for PCI. And we had had poor and very poor, a total of fourteen percent for our PCI rating. But interestingly enough, for the metro, the average for poor and very poor is twenty-two percent. So we're well below that metro average for PCI. So again, they do that every year, but those were the most recent ratings. Icon Water Trails, I think Matt put this in an email, but it was announced at our last board meeting that Bravo had awarded Clive a hundred thousand dollar public art for the Greenbelt Landing grant. We were one of two communities to get a grant. Urbendale was the other one, but theirs was like, I don't remember, it was like fifteen thousand dollars or something pretty small. So I did take a little grief for the fact that we, we got so much money from them. But, but that was nice. So that was, that was very nice of Bravo to provide that grant for the public art. The process for hiring the next executive director is in motion. The hope is to have them hired by July and starting by September. So hopefully we will have a new executive director for the, for Icon here shortly. So that's those two. Last thing, attended a resident meeting for Shadow Creek Pond. I think everyone received some communication on that. The mayor was there with me along with Richard and Jeff Dillon. I thought it was a good meeting. I don't know, ten to twelve folks, something like that, in that range. You know, they weren't angry, but they were definitely insistent that, you know, we needed to, to address the issues. At the pond, it was, was definitely overgrown. You know, it's stocked by the DNR, but there was literally no way I could send my boys out there to go fishing. There was nowhere to even come close to doing something like that. A lot of, a lot of algae. It was just not very aesthetically pleasing. So, so a couple of things with that, that the full council needs to know about. One is just kind of, okay, how are we going to manage to maintain this, certainly in the short term? And I'll ask Richard here in a second to come up and kind of talk through that. The other concern that they had was that the original covenants to the development indicated that the homeowners were responsible for mowing up to basically the edge of the pond. And so that was one of the kind of enticements for some of these, you know, homeowners that they knew that it was going to be maintained because they were going to be the ones to do that. Well, those covenants were changed at some point. And so I asked Richard and we got some information from Doug on that. And Doug, if I say anything wrong, feel free to correct me. But basically, my understanding is that that was, our belief is that that was probably a mistake by the developer. And so they probably got pushed back from either one of the original homeowners or maybe one of the builders who were building on that lot. And so the, the developer made the change to the covenants. And that's not something that we're necessarily responsible for. So it didn't come in front of us, but that was a big concern of theirs because they felt like it was kind of a bait and switch, right? Or that the rug got pulled out from under them because they had one expectation going in. And then, you know, when the city took it over, well, we really didn't do a whole lot. So, so that's something that, you know, I communicated back to that group. We're going to have to put together kind of a plan going forward for, for again, how are, how are we going to manage this? And Richard and his team are going to be working on that. What I've asked from Richard and he's provided me kind of an inventory of the ponds that we have here at the city. We haven't really had to deal with this yet, but you can see on the horizon where this is going to be coming a lot more because we have more ponds coming on that are going to mature. And what we don't have, in my opinion, is a real good policy for maintaining and managing both the ponds and the landscape that surround those ponds. And I think we're going to need to put something like that in place. And I think this Shadow Creek Pond situation will be a really good pilot for that. But that's something where we're going to have to have some real conversations and I've asked.
So is it your understanding that we're responsible for all these ponds? Because that isn't what I.
We have, we have about, yeah, we have a number of ponds. So we have like Schuler, by Schuler Elementary, but that doesn't have any development around it right now. So we haven't had that issue yet. We have the one over here that's co-owned with the retirement community. But again, that has no housing around it, so it's a little different situation. But we have another, a number of other ponds where they're going to be coming online or they are online here, but they're not mature enough.
They're all city.
And they're city owned. And if you remember back in strategic planning, that was intentional, right? Because it was like, well, we had all these stormwater issues. Let's take advantage of these water, of the water features, put lots around it. We can, you know, they're more valuable at that point. People love living around ponds, except when they look like they do at Shadow Creek.
So the only ones that aren't city-owned are off of one hundred twenty-eighth street and Country Club?
So I would maybe the best way to say it is which ones are. So in total, the city owns seven stormwater detention ponds within that. One is the one over here at Greenbelt Landing. That is about a third owned by the city, two-thirds owned by the retirement home, that Presbyterian homes. The second one is the Schuler Pond that Ted referenced. The third one is a Shadow Creek Pond that we're talking about here. Then there's three more that are north of Little Walnut Creek and the Shadow Creek five and six.
And then I've Sircena.
And then Sircena would be the seventh pond.
Again, we haven't had to deal with this because they're not mature enough. Shadow Creek is not mature enough. And we haven't really, again, we don't really have a policy in place for, okay, you know, how much do, how much are we keeping it natural? How much are we mowing? What are the, the cost implications of that? Do we have a fountain to help deal with the algae? But that comes with erosion potential issues. You have to have electricity, so there's cost involved with all of those things.
Often do we dredge?
Right, all those things.
It's going to be required.
We need to have an understanding of all that. And what, what are the cost implications for that? Because that's all going to be coming at us at some point down the line. So Richard's hopefully going to be putting together a lot of that information for us. You know, and, and I think that's something that we're going to have to have some more conversations on, so.
And this was a, a, a big reason that we talked about the water resource team or the natural resources team within, within the parks division. We knew we had these assets, of course. There was a big policy shift with the Shadow Creek development in terms of how we're managing these assets. There was a transition for that development of instead of leaving it up to HOAs to manage these assets that the city would own these assets and take care of them. This was a shift. And so now it is meeting that shift in policy in terms of how we handle that development. And then having the resources and the maintenance teams. Again, that would be one piece of what the natural resources team is doing, but we envisioned that that would be a big role for that team in terms of maintenance of these ponds. And then various other, obviously, stormwater assets, whether it's the bio cells in Clark and, and other assets like that. But the ponds is a big piece of that. So we've been talking about it at a staff level, definitely see it as a strategic planning item too, for you all to discuss in terms of the policy. Because of course there's costs that come with whatever we do with those ponds. But also recognizing too, is there was an expectation. Of course, we got to maintain it to a certain degree, but that these were going to be more wild ponds isn't probably the right term. But we wanted to be very intentional about not having manicured turf up to the edge of the pond.
But I think that's what we need to talk about, right?
Right, in terms of those expectations.
We talked about natural ponds, that sounds good on paper, but what does that actually look like in person? And do the homeowners want that? And do we need a different policy for, you know, ponds like what are over there where they're not ringed by homes and ponds that are ringed by homes? They may be two different policies. So, so I don't know. Again, I, I don't have the answers, but I think that's, there's a lot of discussion that we need to have around that. So Richard, could you give us an update on what's going on in Shadow Creek?
Yeah, absolutely. No, I appreciate the background by Ted and by Matt. You know, first of all, I'd say, I think the, the residents around that pond were right to, to, to give us a call about what it looked like. One of the things here is that this pond specifically has been kind of in the development for the last four plus years. And kind of just not necessarily a comedy of errors, but when it was initially seeded, it was very dry. So not a lot of the, the native seed took. It's been reseeded a couple of different times and that has taken to different effects throughout that pond. There are some areas that are absolutely beautiful with wildflowers, you know, with bees and butterflies and things like that. But there are areas that haven't got that native seed established and that, that's their biggest complaint out there. Those, there was weeds that are four, five, six feet tall that really we needed to knock down probably a month ago. So it, part of it is us learning the right time to knock that down, to get that establishment right. We have since Monday, we mowed the entire pond. We knocked down the entire shoreline. We sprayed the weeds with, the weeds along the edge of the pond itself. So we got that, working to get that under control. We've done some water quality tests as we start to look at maybe why there was so much algae and growth along the shoreline there. I'm happy to say that the water quality tests were very, very good out there. There was no concerns from that. So starting to look at ways that we could manage the growth within the pond. Things, some of the things we're looking at, like on Ted mentioned, maybe some sort of aerator. Maybe it's not a fountain, but it aerates and keeps the water oxygenated. Looking at things, maybe could you put a grass carpet in there to eat some of that? But then that has some water quality trade-offs. How could you mow some areas down to allow for better fishing access? Do we do maybe a blend of like a little bit of a strip along the properties themselves as mowed turf? But then the, the slopes down into the pond are that native priority that we specifically pick a seed mix that is only maybe this tall. So looking at a lot of different ways, and I think this would be a good test example on how can we balance what we want to have there, which is high water quality and a more native appearance there, but then balancing some of those things what the residents want. One of the things we also talked about with them, they thought maybe a walking, multi-walking trail around that because those were designed with that twenty-foot wide flat maintenance access all the way around that. It makes a perfect spot from a, a walking path from there. So we're looking at some different ideas. We're going to get us, get them together and then to present them to the residents and see if there's a balance that we can maybe use. This is a test pilot for those future ponds.
Yeah, we've, we've committed to them that Richard and his team will put together kind of a proposed plan, hopefully by mid-July sometime. And then we'll reconvene that resident group. I told them, I told their kind of leader, if you will, they may not like everything in the plan. But much like we did with Clark Street and others, we will, we will listen to them, make sure they're heard and incorporate their feedback where we can. So, so I think they're, they're pleased with that approach. And, you know, I, I've already heard from one resident who was ecstatic about what, what was done just recently with the mowing. So, you know, at least we're showing a level of commitment there that, that, you know, we're taking it seriously, so.
Councilman, if I could add, just as you're thinking about this as a strategic planning item, when we discussed this during the water resources master planning process, we talked about all of these ponds, public or private, as part of the bigger inspection responsibility that the city has as an MS four entity. So the city-owned ponds are going to be inspected every year as part of our compliance with that. It doesn't necessarily in that inspection process cover all the things that you all may want to do. Some of those things may not, maybe be more on the aesthetic side of things and not as related to the actual performance of the pond for what it needs to do to control water volumes and water quality. But that'll be one more set of eyes that is always out there checking on its performance and how things are working. Private the owned ponds. This is an issue that cities all around the country are having a problem with. We know that a lot of times HOAs or private property owners just don't know how to do these things the right way. And hey, have a healthy water environment or aquatic environment, those ponds. Most of the cities that I've been talking to through ICEWAP are trying to address those private pond issues using grant programs. And we're standing ours up here still this summer. We don't want that grant dollars to be used for just normal maintenance activities. We think that really fairly belongs to the owner of the pond. But for improvements like adding a forbay to better catch sediment, make it easier to do the dredging in the future. Maybe get some of the native plantings on parts of the shoreline to shore them up so that you don't have as much sediment sloughing out into the pond. Those are the types of improvements that other cities are letting their, are, are helping folks pay for using their grant program. So that'll be another part of this discussion potentially, if you'd like it to be when you get to August.
Sure. Because Susan did bring up a good point when we traded some emails about how with the private ponds, I mean, they are doing some stormwater management for us. So the city does have, you know, some level of interest. Now, what level that is, is, is up for debate, but I think it needs to be part of the conversation for sure.
I just think we need to be really careful about it because there were requests from the pond off of one hundred twenty-eight for us to help. In fact, they thought that that had been committed, that we would help with it. And then the explanation was that we don't do that, but we are on some of these. And so we need to have a good understanding of why. And why and what?
Consistent policy.
Yeah, right, right.
To clarify, when we did communicate with the first letter that the mayor sent to the pond, we said, there is this program coming forward. And so there was no hiding that future reality from that group. They decided though that they wanted to move forward on their timeline to get it done. And now there are still open questions about how they want to engage with the city moving forward. So we'll continue to represent that that program will be available to folks who want to make improvements to the way that we do water resources.
Last thing, I did, did want to just say that I, I wanted to thank Richard for what he did out with the residents. He did a tremendous job. He was truly the expert out there. There's no way I could have answered their questions the way, the way he did. And, and so it was very much appreciated that he came out and helped us with that. So thank you. That's it.
Anything else, Ted? Eric, you've got handouts for us?
I do. So a couple of things, this is the strategic plan from Catch the Boyne, recently adopted. Key things here, you can go through this, I'm not going to repeat them, but they've been working on this for several years. It kind of stalled in COVID, but now they finally have a document that they can go through and, and continue, continue the mission just to adopt the budget and also new board of directors as well. I served on that budget committee. I was at the Country Club West HOA meeting, gave an update on some of the city activities, some of the development activities that were occurring out in, in Western Clive right there. Wanted to give a shout out to Jeff, to you and your public works team. You're doing a tremendous job with roads out there. I've certainly noted, noticed the difference out there with the Mastick and, and the work you guys doing. They're, they're very thorough, very professional. Please let them know. Please let them know that they're doing a tremendous job. We appreciate everything they're doing. I get how hot it is too, working with that tar. So it's a tough job, but they're really doing a great job. And we're seeing some of that with improved streets. Glad to see that, that Bravo grant was approved. In previous years, we have seen very little return from Bravo here in Clive. So if any last year, so glad to see we're finally getting some ROI from our Clive, Clive citizens on, on the, the investments that we give to Bravo back into the Clive community. So appreciate that. That's all, your honor.
Thanks, Eric. Susan?
I'd just like to thank Pete and Matt for helping to put some good information together about some of the federal funding that has come into projects in the city of Clive that we were able to share with a statewide group of Iowans who went into Washington DC last week to discuss building a better Iowa. Yeah, I think that was well received. And then just a point of personal privilege, I felt very honored to receive a lifetime achievement award from the Iowa Environmental Council last week. Hope that reflects well for Clive.
Goodness. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Just made you old.
That did not escape my notice.
Let that be stricken from the record. Counsel.
Nothing.
Yeah. Just a few, just a couple of quick items, your honor. As I mentioned to counsel and just trying to get some schedules together for early August for some phone interviews with Lyle. I know a number of you have already gotten back to me. So if you will look at your, it is on a weekend. Just to be a little even more convenient for counsel, August 5th or 6th, if you have some availability to do your one hour Zoom. We'll, we'll do them as Zoom interviews with Lyle prior to our strategic planning. Please give me a timeframe that you're available. Again, I know a number of you have already gotten back to me on that. So if you would follow up, I would very much appreciate that. Also wanted to mention, I felt we had a really good staff appreciation event last Friday as a part of the Food Truck Friday series. Want to give credit to council member Weaver for coming up with that idea initially on, why didn't we do it with a food truck Friday event? And we, we took it, ran with it and had a fun little kickball game and some other activities and some fun awards. And, and a good time for our staff to come together with their families and enjoy a community event. So I think that went off very well.
And he pulled hamstrings from the.
There might be one. Oh, there's, there's, we, we think there might be two. There was some, some icing and some, some needs for, for a couple of hamstrings on, on each team, I think. One's recovering here in the council chambers as we speak. So that, but again, always a welcome counsel feedback on that. Getting feedback from the staff as well. I'm going to get that group together, the, the rec staff and Roxanne, who really helped bring that event together and thank them. And also debrief on what we can do next year. And then as we work through the calendar year, each quarter, and I'll make the council aware when these events occur. If you want to pop in for them, we're going to have quarterly events, smaller events at each city facility, starting with this facility in September. Public Works in December and then Public Safety, probably late March, early April. Kind of each quarter have a, a time for staff to come together and, and have some, some, some time. So really excited about how we're changing our kind of staff appreciation program. And then now starting here after July 1, I'll be going out and doing the staff service awards along with the mayor, depending on the, the nature of the award in terms of the tenure and doing them on, either on or close to their anniversary dates throughout the year. We'll still recognize the list during the, the staff appreciation food truck Friday event, but then we'll be doing individual meetings with, and getting out with staff throughout the year. So excited about those changes. And, and then this final comment for me, as again, as I've stated earlier, appreciate your support for continuing as your city manager for this community. I know we have a, a lot before us, whether it's the new initiatives, new projects, new challenges from various directions. But very committed to helping lead this organization and this great staff to, to achieve new heights. So again, I appreciate that support and that's all I have, your honor.
Correspondents. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, we'll adjourn at 7:34.